I'd like to call the order of the Village of Marvin Park's Recreation and Greenways Board Meeting here on Tuesday, March 1st at 9:12 a.m. I do determine we have a quorum with myself, Bob, Christina, and our council liaison Kimberly. First item on the agenda is the adoption of the agenda. Do I hear a motion on the table to add to unfinished business number four, 2022 events?
We need to put Marvin, Marvin Day at the, at the end of the, at the end of unfinished business.
Oh, not the end of the day?
We need to put, well, that's the, that's the last thing we're talking about.
Oh, because we don't-
We need to put Marvin Day at the bottom down here, and if you want to put something, put a new number one, you can.
Okay, okay, and then swap this, okay. Do I hear a motion on the table to-
You can, you can just read all the changes and then just adopt as amended. That's easier.
I might not have wrote it the right way there.
Yeah, I think I know what. Do I hear a motion on the table to add as the first item in unfinished business, 2022 events, and we will move discussion of 2022 Marvin Day to item number four?
Seven.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
I gotta give my game.
Yes, you do. I, I saw the second. I gave you time, but you didn't take it.
Who made the motion?
There was a solid pause there.
Yeah, I did. I was kidding.
Who made the motion?
Oh, my God.
She did.
And you, you seconded it off. Okay.
I was like, that was a solid pause.
We're in the shoe.
And then the next item on the agenda is the adoption of the previous minutes from our February 20, February 1st, 9 a.m. meeting of the regular board, as well as the village council and PRG joint meeting of February 22nd. Are there any changes or other discussions regarding those minutes? Is there a motion on, is there a motion on the table to approve? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Next item on the agenda is public comment. Do we have anyone signed up? Public comment. Grab a seat. Okay, it looks like we have Megan Windsor.
Yep.
And if you would please state your name and your address.
Sure. Megan Windsor, 1908 Deer Meadows Drive in Waxaw, North Carolina, 28173. I'm sorry, I've never done this before.
Yeah, it'll be good.
It's a two minute, three?
It's three minutes.
Oh, okay. I don't know that I'm gonna take that long, but I have notes, so hopefully it'll make people faster. Okay. I am the co-owner of a business called FitCater. It's a fitness company, and we just recently moved here from Illinois and have had the wonderful opportunity of utilizing the barn space to do our fitness classes, which I actually just came from teaching a class there, and your space is wonderful. I love it. One thing that we're finding is a lot of people don't know about the barn, even though they've been residents or have lived here for a long time. And so, one thing that myself and my, my co-owner are kind of looking to ask the board is for a way to, for you guys to create a way to advertise to local residents, to just let them know what's at the barn. I know that there are other classes there, and I just think the space is so wonderful and just not enough people know about it, and I think that it would benefit not only the people that are, you know, the small businesses, but also you guys, because it would bring more people to the location. And I know that you guys are a government, and so you can't technically promote things, but even just giving people the information, like, these are the classes that are available. If you want to find more information, click here or whatnot. I just think having one space for all of the people that are utilizing that, that space for the residents would just be really beneficial and really helpful for all parties involved. So, I think that was under the agreement. That's, I think that's all?
Seven, three.
Okay?
Thank you very much.
That is, alright. Thank you. Have a lovely evening.
If you agree with anything, please.
Okay, we're back to the agenda. There are the public facility managers update, but there's nothing in there.
I'll just give you one update real quick. Bob and I met last week with my park staff and just went over the roundabout plantings, the additional roundabout plantings. So, I've got the quote into the finance for those wintergreen boxwoods to get pre-audited and approved and looking at delivery of those sometime in the next seven to 10 days, based on when the guys want to schedule themselves to do the work. But we're just about ready to put them in, so you should see those pretty soon.
Can I?
I have stuff.
But just comment on something else. The update on the sign, Derek. I just got a text this morning, March 7th, the sign, the post will go up. He was gonna do it this past Sunday.
It was raining.
But it was raining, and he was unable to put it up, so I just wanted you to be aware of it being a happiness coming, so.
Okay. So, I'll probably chuck out there, because I'll be out of town.
He won't let it sit for three or four days before he puts the sign on it.
Okay. Excellent. And I think that's all I have.
Do you want an update on the trail?
Uh, yeah.
Yes?
Kim and Hunter and myself and the Trail Builders-
Which trail?
Walked the Preserve Internal Trail yesterday, the pit.
The pit.
And we looked at a couple of different things, a connector over to Ennis Brook, what it, what it will take for him to put a little connection in a bridge to cross that creek. There's obviously some easement issues that planning still has to work out, but the trail, we at least put it on the Trail Builders' eyes to know what, you know, he's got to tackle from his end, and he's gonna give us a quote for that additional portion. And then also, he encountered a couple unforeseen things with where the easement that Toll Brothers gave us, it looked great on paper, but when they built their retention ponds, it didn't turn out so good. So, Hunter and I've got some creative, we gotta come up with some options to basically get them to maybe agree to move some easements, just, you know, over 30 feet or something, use the burn at the top of the retention pond to kind of get the trail started, but most of it looks really good. Might have to add a little boardwalk.
When you're talking about easements, are you talking about easements, moving them around, like you said, just within the preserve, or are you also talking about stuff with Ennis Brook if that's being connected to?
Just, just the Preserve.
Okay.
Ennis Brook's not to the point where they want to give us an easement, but as they are building the internal Preserve Trail, or Preserve Internal Trail, we thought it made a lot of sense to go ahead and get it across the creek, which would still be on Preserve property, and so whenever we do at whatever point get the easement from Ennis Brook, well, the bridge will already be there, the connector will already be there.
Derek, help me out.
Uh huh.
I'm on the Preserve Trail, okay? And I'm going up toward the culvert, but down the hill going over to the culvert section on my left.
Yeah.
And we have the pond.
Yeah.
Where's the connector gonna be again?
Um.
On the other side of the culvert.
No, 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 no. It's gonna be, you know where that bench is, or you know where you go over the little culvert, kind of at the low spot?
And there's a bench on the left.
Yeah. Just before the bench, you're gonna take a right and, and go up next to that retention pond. And you're gonna start paralleling those houses.
Oh, okay.
And it's lovely. Like, we walked most of it. It's gonna be great back there.
Well, it's actually, well, we're gonna have a really nice trail system in this option.
Yeah.
Really adorable.
And that, that one's gonna be massive, I mean, 4,600 feet.
We're, we need to unmute us.
We have, now Hunter, Dan is trying to get on, but he says it won't let him in. We, says-
Oh, well, tell him, come in.
Is he, has he got the wrong meeting?
Um, but it's, it's gonna be lovely back there, and it's long, so that'll be a nice, what it, Derek, what will it be from, if you went from Villa, New Villa Hall, if you got on and hopped on there, went all the way around, came in by the retention pond, walked through the neighborhood, and then back up to the, not sidewalk there yet, but-
You'd clear a mile.
I mean, it's gonna be nice. It's lovely back in those woods.
Yep. So, so is Tom all around Amber Woods. When we do that connect-
It's gonna be so nice.
That is, that's gonna be a gorgeous trail.
But there's some moose back there, so. Some moose trail.
Gosh, I'm hell. It might have been elk.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I was thinking-
It might have been elk.
Wouldn't that be awesome? Just walking down the street like it's Northern Exposure or something. There's a moose on the east.
Okay, sorry, that was it.
That's a good note.
I have to get on that storm.
I think that's, I think that's all the things, roundabout.
Trump's-
And then obviously, you seen the guys, they're clearing the town, the new town hall property.
Which looks great. They're doing a great job.
They've all done a good job, sure.
Really good job. And then also, Hunter spoke with Houltie about all that land behind the apartments, townhouses over off of railroad. Rohit had originally talked to them about donating that land as a park slash greenway area, and Houltie's definitely interested in that, so as they continue, but Hunter's talked to them and started that dialogue again, so that's good. There is a lot of swampy stuff back there, but, so we might have to do more bridges like, um-
Is that kind of like behind Andy's?
Yes, which will give us great options for connectivity back there.
I don't make Dan happy.
That's what I was thinking.
His little earshot. So, Hunter said he talked to them, and they were definitely interested, and we'll keep, we'll keep pushing that ball forward.
Dan will be on any second. He had, he was using the link from last month, so.
Well, that makes sense.
Okay. Next item is unfinished business, number one would be 2022 events.
Yeah, I was just gonna run over this real quick, because I sent you guys an email, just making sure you had these on your calendar, because I know we're, we're consumed with Marvin Day, but didn't want it to get lost, trying to get better, planning ahead. So, August 2nd, National Night Out, and December 10th. And these are consistent with, obviously, National Night Out is the first Tuesday in August, and our tree lighting, we've always done the second Saturday, because Waxaw does the first. So, I would say for next meeting, if you have any thoughts on things you want to see at National Night Out, changes, ideas, if you don't want to have to cook hamburgers and hot dogs again, and maybe you want to do a food truck and, you know, see if we can offset the cost of it or something.
That might actually bring more people in, too, but a food, or a known entity, especially if it was one that was at Marvin Day.
It's kind of where I was thinking, you know?
Or just ice cream.
We get some established relationships and notoriety, you know, and, yeah, if they're popular at Marvin Day, that would be an easy plug in there.
The only thing I'd say is that the, the food trucks would inherently mean that the people would be buying the food.
Yeah, and so I think we could be creative with-
Versus the others, donations to try and-
With a, like a sponsorship and to offset the cost, you know, and maybe we advertise it that, to make, keep this event family-friendly, you know, your cost will be a maximum of $5 per head or something, or.
Do we have enough attendance at this event to justify a food truck?
Well-
Or an ice cream truck?
I think-
Well, that's why I'm saying, so many of them are the law enforcement officers.
Yeah, I'm just really concerned with living up-
Well, that's why I want, I want your input, because I want to get the attendance back up to where it used to be.
Yeah.
You know, I want 200 or 300 people there, so we can justify food truck.
Like, moving the movie, bring the movie back, maybe, stuff like that.
Hot air balloon rides, you know? Tether, hot air balloon.
We have those?
No, but we could.
We could.
We could do a lot of things.
Or like the pony rides.
I'm just thinking of the insurance.
I like seeing how hard it is. I know we can't do that on the planet.
Disc golf tournament.
Yeah, talk about a whole harmless agreement.
You know, disc golf tournament.
But we had, do have to remember that last year, last summer, people were still really freaked out with COVID.
In your point.
About-
Well, and it was moving.
Yeah, we did October last year.
Yeah. Christina, I understand your point. I agree with your point. I think COVID was special, but we, at least since I've been part of PR, we've never had good attendance. We're talking three years in a row, at least my expectation of what I think we, what we should have for the effort put forth by you and your team, Derek. I'm continually disappointed when I get out there.
Yeah.
And so I, so I'm hoping that we can come up with some ideas to, to get more people out there, because I know it's a lot of work.
That's what I'm saying, like, let's figure out what those draws are gonna be. Definitely the movies are popular.
Yeah, actually, one other thing that I think we, and, and this'll come to the Marvin Day to some degree, but have something specifically about a calendar, calendar of events, you know, posted in the barn of what's gonna be coming later on in the year to, you know, or, you know, posted the barn there and, you know, at different sites, so.
John, I agree. I think where we fall short most of the time, I think is a fair comment, it's on the marketing side of things.
Yeah.
It's promoting the different venues.
Crossfit and promoting all of the events.
To our, our public's comment, most people don't even know where the barn is or that it exists, so she's not wrong about-
National Night Out's hard, too, because school's not in, so you don't have that running to school connection. Yeah. So, that is hard. But I do like the idea of bringing the movie, doing the movie night with it, in conjunction with it. I think that'll bring a lot more people out.
We have Dan now, by the way.
Oh, hi, Dan.
Hi, Dan.
We've got some things working in our favor. COVID is, you know, hopefully on the decrease, people are, you know, getting out more. We'll have the new sign up. The disc golf course is becoming more popular and bringing more people in. All these, this lady and various vendors are bringing, you know, people into the park and exposing them. We're busy, you know, it's super busy, so if we couple that with the promotion and the marketing, you know, that's where, honestly, where we've fallen short on our end, you know, like, we don't get the banners up in time, and I'm just overwhelmed and I, and I dropped the ball, and so I'm trying to get ahead of it and stay ahead of it now, and council's supportive with the, with the extra staff, so we can, you know. But I, but I think we do need that, that one or, those one or two things that-
Every year.
Somebody just is like, what? They're gonna do that? Oh, we're going.
Right.
So, you want us to come to the April meeting with ideas?
Camel ride.
Oh, I'm all in for camel ride.
Elephants.
Elk. We have the elk. We should ride the elk.
Do you want us to come with ideas for the April meeting?
Yes.
Coward.
Well, I can already throw a couple out there, and there, there's still things that we do on a regular basis, is your spring litter cleanup. We should do a spring and a fall and just have it on a kind of a schedule, right? We also already have a, a park cleanup day, because I've already got enough people for that, I'm not really publicizing it, because honestly, 30 people is too many to manage. So, on the 12th, we've already, the, the church that helped us last time, they're, they are already, ready to do another one.
When you bring those ideas, bring a little bit of research, though, like, don't, you know, if you bring a camel ride-
Have a camel ride person.
Have a camel ride person and tell me what it's gonna cost and that, et cetera, et cetera, so we can discuss it, not just, oh, that's a great idea.
But are you talking about, like, standing events that we have throughout the year, though, not just camel?
No, 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 I'm talking about things to-
He wants National Night Out.
The change that we've got.
Just National Night Out.
Yeah, I, you know, if the intent is that the Marvin Day will be an annual thing, you know, then, then, you know, that's kind of a spring thing, and we've got, you know, the, the summer thing.
And then Christmas, too.
Christmas thing. We've tried to work in a fall in the past, but people are so busy, back to school, sports clubs, everything, you know, it, it becomes more difficult, but, but if we have those three core things and just continue to kind of refine and improve those.
Yeah.
So, on that note, I, I just got an email as I'm sitting here. Union County is willing to work with us, all the other little municipalities, they're willing to bring the movie night to us, and they have, the only date they have left open is Friday, October 28th. Probably will be a football game that night, I think playoffs may have been started.
Definitely gonna be a football game that night.
But we could still try it, you know, for the non-football market, and it's very, almost no cost to us, because Union County's doing it.
Then we should do it.
And you also don't know if it's a home or away game.
No, we don't, but, do y'all want me to pencil that in?
What day did you say?
Friday, October 28th.
Yeah.
Yes.
And it could be a Halloween movie. Like Young Frankenstein, but nobody likes-
Oh, maybe, maybe we could have the Bat DiCon.
Do they choose?
We could have the Bat DiCon.
The bats are back.
Or was it a girl?
Yeah.
Was it a girl?
It was. She was.
It is. It still is.
No, no, this is, this is awesome. The kids wear their costumes.
Yep.
Play trick or treat in the barn.
It'd be great.
Kids friendly trick or treat.
We could do, seriously, do a bat presentation if we want to.
I'm serious. The bat lady was awesome.
Yeah, we could have the owl in a costume, Marvin.
I love it.
Awesome.
Not wearing that.
All right.
Not wearing it.
This is a great-
Do owls eat bats? That's the question.
Do they ride elk?
All right, so for next meeting, National Night Out ideas, and then we'll get, let's get through Marvin Day, and-
That'll give us enough time.
And we'll, and we'll iron out that and, and Halloween movie night.
Okay, sounds good.
And, oh, this is great. I did have a conversation last year with, you know, the K-9 company that brings the dog to the tree lighting? The dog kissing booth?
Oh, yeah, yes.
One of those ladies wants to do a haunted trail walk.
Oh, I'm saying, that could be fun for the kids.
That could be really fun.
So, that might, that might tie in well there.
That could be really fun.
Hide in the bamboo.
Oh, our trail's perfect for it, because it's-
Wait, there's trails at the park?
No, no, no.
You have a park?
Oh, you have a park?
We're still gonna build it. I need, I need some money to build it.
I just gave you a bunch of money. I gave you a boatload.
All right, well, that's good. That's awesome. I like how that came together.
I like the movie night thing, even if it is a football game. I don't have any kids playing football. I'll be there.
Yeah.
Just to see the owl costume, which nothing else.
Let's do the bats. Let's do the bats thing.
Oh, yeah.
Let's, um-
Okay, I'm not sure that we can get a bat person on a Friday night, but we can try, sure.
Okay.
Okay, so how-
Certainly not.
Even if it's just a display, you know?
Of bats?
We get, no.
Pictures, the different kinds.
Actually, actually, worst case scenario, it could be a poster session.
We'll iron it out later.
Do you know what I'm talking about?
Yeah, sure.
We got time.
Not much.
It's probably not the best thing to say.
Not much.
Yeah, don't say that.
Okay. All right. Thank y'all.
Very productive.
Moving on.
All right, so item number two is pocket park update.
You or me, Kim?
Okay, so I went out there and looked at it to see how the clearing went, and I mean, I think it looks terrible.
It does look terrible.
It looks terrible, and it, me personally, if it's a park, I think it needs to be more manicured and more inviting for people to come in. I think a lot of those little scrubby, I don't know what they are, but the little green scrubby things, like, they need to go. Like, we need to get them to clear out more and those, I don't know, whatever they left in there. It just needs to basically be cleared out minus the big stuff and do our paths, and then plant really nice plants and have it super inviting for people, because I think it looks terrible. We've, do-
Okay, so, full, not, not, I had a, I had a workday scheduled.
Yeah.
And we had to cancel it because of this meeting.
Yeah.
So, I had a crew that was gonna come up there and work on it.
Okay.
And, because I did not leave it in a place that I, that was where it was planned to be left.
Okay.
But mud and time and all that, so, anyway, I was gonna need help. So, I had to cancel that, and I don't know if I can get those guys back out there. I can only do so much by myself. It will get, it'll get done, it will get done to what you're talking about.
Well, no, but I think we need, I think we need to have the people who came and cleared it originally come back out and do more.
So, my original plan was to keep it a natural area. Natural areas have little stuff and big stuff in them, but if we want it to be a park, sorry, Derek, then we need to hand it over to the park guys and let them do a park kind of thing. And, and I'm, and trust me, I already told Derek this, very happy to hand this back off, because I have so much stuff going on. So, I mean, it's, it's gonna be a, a lot of work to do whatever you want to do, but-
I think the big decision to me right now is, is it left natural or is it cleared and then rebuilt?
If, if you're asking, my opinion is to clear it and rebuild it and make it a nice pocket park, where it's inviting. We talked about putting benches there and little trails in between and birdhouses and stuff. To me, that is lovely, right in front of our first commercial development beside a really nice neighborhood in Marvin. I think it needs to look representative of Marvin and not just some, you know, more natural, wild-looking area. That's my opinion.
Then I think that for me, I need to hand it off back to somebody else.
And that's totally fine.
Because that's, that was, but I had planned, and, and that's fine. Again, I've got plenty going on, so, no, but to make it, what, what, just to have my last say on it, to make it a, a wildlife habitat kind of area, in my mind, it's not full of grass and, I don't know, I'm trying to think of plants that would go in there. It's a lot of-
The only thing that I think about kind of making that change, I think part of what we were going to is we didn't have staff at that time or really envision it growing enough for the maintenance person, you know, to, to handle it from a maintenance perspective, because, you know, even the areas that are being kept up around it now are being done by publics, you know, and I think the intent was, well, jeez, if they just keep doing that part of it, we leave the rest of it natural. Now, I, I haven't been in there again probably in about a month, so I don't know if it looks vastly different than when they kind of first cleared.
Unless somebody, some, some miracle has happened.
But, but the issue that I kind of had was, like you were talking about, there's still too many of those small trees.
I thought I got-
Well, I flipped it around. That's, it's this way now, but it doesn't matter.
So, so I don't know, you know, if we do go to the type of park that you're talking about, that's gonna drive up the maintenance perspective, you know?
Yeah. Can I kind of back conversation up a little bit? When I think of the park and whether or not I would use that park, I'll use myself as an example. One, I wouldn't use the park, because it's right on the highway, it's a pretty good distance from publics. I mean, you're set, you're set pretty far back, so I don't know what the usage level for that's going to be, and then you, and then if we dress it up to the point that it becomes something that's gonna require a lot of maintenance, as you said, and we don't get a lot of use for it, then it's an unnecessary cost to Marvin. On the other hand, I agree with Kim to, to the point that you want it to be reflective of our community, too, and when we started this whole conversation, we started with the thought that we wanted to make it native and that we wanted to make sure that it's not animals, but it would be very attractive. So, I thought it was gonna be a blend of both. I thought it was gonna be mostly native plants, but also very well-done and landscaped, and, you know, we talked about in the last meeting, having consistency with our trails in terms of the type of material we use for the trail, so that, that we define it better, so it's much nicer. So, I, you know, I'm, I'm at the point where I would like to see a, where we have maybe blended, I know that, and I know Dan's on the call, you know, I still think we have an opportunity, and I don't want to go off on it, but where we make this a park where people have the opportunity to contribute to it.
Me, like benches and-
And memorialize, you know, a plant, you know, we've talked about, where Sloan donated a certain amount of money for the park.
Dan's daughter.
And, and whether it was Dan, yeah, but Sloan donated X amount of money, and it's restricted money and it's gonna be used for that, but I'd like her to. But I'd also like if, if we opened up the park and we said, okay, we want to put a park management, we want to put whatever in there, if somebody wants to donate it, then we create a plaque, so we minimize the cost for the park and accomplish what we want at the same time. And, you know, which direction we go in terms of native versus more manicured, I, I think, you know, I understand Kim's point very well. And, you know, which direction we go in terms of native versus more manicured, I, I, I think, you know, I understand Ken's point very well. But I also understand, we'd like to do something native and, and have a lot of planning. And I agree with everybody else in terms of what it looks like right now. It's not a, it's an eyesore right now. But anyway, those are my thoughts.
This is Dan. I think I tend to agree with what Bob was. I brought, I don't know, I'm sorry for hijacking things, but I scared my screen. I don't know if you can see that.
Not yet.
Well, that's.
Original plan.
Oh, that's.
That's the original plan, which I had to flip around, but because of the privet. I've actually flipped that grass mulch part. It's shaped the opposite way, but the, the general idea is the same.
But I mean, that does not look like what it looks like. I mean, I know we haven't planted anything and everything, but that, I mean, I think that is considered manicured.
But I have a feeling that you think all of this is just, there's nothing there but a tree, a tree. And, and I'm just trying to figure out what.
I did think that.
Then somebody has to, then somebody has to, to maintain that and mow that and the, or in my mind, planting grass in there is.
It could be mulch.
Christina?
Yeah.
Sorry. Which one is, um, where you have the, the dashed in the up front, is it grass or mulch?
I thought it should be mulch.
Then what's the back part then?
So that, that's plants. I mean, it's what.
Just like natural undergrowth.
I really think that I should probably bow out of this because my vision of this and what it's gonna be, okay, I just, I can't, I cannot take, um, responsibility for maintaining this acre.
Oh, I don't think you should.
And the park. I would rather do the park.
No.
I, I think, I think those dots are trees.
Dots?
Those, um, your little clouds.
Oh, no, yeah, the clouds are trees.
If, if they're established trees, then underneath them is mulch. And, or, you know, no, no growth, let's per se, mulch and leaves.
Yeah.
We can maintain that. And then the front is clean for tables and benches.
Yep.
What I've seen when I've been out there, the primary use is gonna be, um, workers at lunch.
Yeah, I mean, that's the trash we've seen, sure.
Like, I'm gonna go out there.
And people making phone calls, actually.
Yeah, yeah. And somebody's gonna be on the phone and take a smoke break. Um, just look for somewhere calm to sit, even though it's traffic going by, it's better than.
Once you're at the parking lot, it's not that.
Yeah, well, it's better than just sitting in the parking lot.
I need your help. I didn't see that.
But I've been over there and I've had my lunch and, you know.
But so, so the tree, there are trees already there. There are cedar trees and pine trees that are really nice and have grown probably several feet since we started this thing. And maybe that's not, tho, those are still nice trees. They're native. They put themselves there. The birds like them, all that kind of thing. They're, I would, in a million years, not dig those up to plant in Red Mason or Craig Merrill or something, right?
Oh.
So, but they're probably not, they're probably not exactly where those look.
And that's great either.
But can you, can you go like to tag, know those eight or 12 that you wanna keep and then clear out the rest?
Um, okay, I can, I can probably, yeah, I mean, of course I can do that. Sorry, go ahead. I can't hear you.
I do think this plan, and it's a really, I totally, I, I, I recommend sticking with the plan. Where this is located, I have, now my kids are getting a little bit older, I think you, you do not want to encourage kids at this park near the big road.
No, or dogs. I mean, yeah, people aren't gonna come there with their kids and their dogs.
Yeah, and the, and the other thing that I would say is that when you, when you look at it from Providence Road, looks pretty good. Because.
Cause we can't see what's up there.
Because they have their, their manicured thing.
Yeah.
We wanna continue to keep at least along the road, under those power lines. I think that's the dashed lines is where the power lines are.
Okay.
It's some kind of.
Or, or the berm, there's a berm there.
It's so repetitive.
So I, I, I think as much of that front third, let's say, or quarter, you wanna keep pretty much as it is right now. And, and it looks.
And that was the plan.
Because those folks are maintaining it. I think the, the, the third by the parking lot is where we still wanna do the grass and the mulch. And then if you're talking about that third in the middle, it, it's just kind of cleaning that up, I, I think. I think right now it looks as bad as it does because, you know.
It's winter?
We erred on lea, yeah, we erred on leaving more than less because it's, it's hard to put things in. But, but I think, you know, once you start focusing on that third, leaving that kind of natural, it still keeps that buffer from the road. Um, cause, cause you're not really gonna want to have those trails. You see how it kind of loops right there? You know, I don't even know if you need the, the paths that go on Providence Road or the path that goes right.
There's a path, there's a path that goes all the way around that. I mean, that exists.
That, that one's fine.
So I was just trying to bring everybody around so they could do a big circle.
Take that one out. So maybe have like this one over here and these in here, but you probably don't need that one there.
Correct.
I'm not sure I put that one in anyway. I think it went, what I, I think what it did, it went to here, because there's one path over there too, actually, to not mess, but whatever. Um, it's closed.
I think it's still under construction and if we stick with the plan, it's my, my, my thought.
Yeah, I, I, I would say give it a while longer. We've got other.
I think no reason to change it.
Uh, you know, investments to, to make in, in, in other areas right now, but.
Well, I would, I would absolutely agree that right now, anybody who's got a natural area in their yard or whatever, this is as bad as it looks. Because there's just, everything's brown and kind of dead looking. Another reason that the pines and the, the cedars are kind of nice because they're evergreens. I mean, so there's some green back there that we wouldn't have if they were all deciduous trees, right? Um, I can go back and, and, um, kind of draw it off the way the paths actually are, if I can find them now, cause they're kind of probably not quite.
Or, or if you could, or if you could just kind of take a look at what's there now and just kind of redo that, redo that sketch when you have it.
So I've already changed this because that's where the privets were, this, this area over here. So I, I made the swell go up, not swell, the swoop go up this way.
Yeah.
Uh, because that, he'd already cleared that off because of that giant privet. So I can do another pass at it. Can I get, can I ask for the guys to come help? I mean, the, the students, if I can still get them to come out and put some mulch on the path so we can see where those paths are. I know we were talking about doing a different kind of, of path, but right now, I, I'm, I'm worried, concerned that where we did, uh, kind of, uh, push off the path, I mean, he basically went through there with a smaller, um, attachment and tried to make little paths where he could for me, and then I've gotta go in and clear out some other spaces, or we do. Um, but without putting mulch down there, they kind of just disappear over time, right? With the mud and the rain and everything. If I could get some mulch out there to, to say, this is where the path is, and if we wanna change the type of path, what do you call, um, cover later, we could change it. But right now, I'm sort of in a holding pattern. This is gonna start growing right back up and it's probably happening now. I mean, stuff in my yard is starting to pop up already, so I don't. What do you want me to do is what I'm getting at. Because I had like 20 kids ready to go on the 19th of February and we were gonna put mulch down, um, but. So I sort of need that crowd.
Yeah, we should, like a solid action plan going forward. I mean, if you, you know, if you need the mulch and I can get you the mulch. Um, if I need to send my guys out there, you know, I can send my guys out there. So what, what is that?
I think the first thing is we need to get the paths mulched so we know where they are. Do you see, I mean, like right now, you could look out there and I, I think I know where they are at this point. I knew where they were a month ago.
But so, why are we gonna put mulch on if we're gonna build them and to crush concrete?
Well, that's what I'm, if, if you're gonna do the crush, cut, I can't even say, concrete, then do that. I mean, but we need the paths delineated. That's what I'm getting at, however you wanna do it.
Okay.
Um, to me, mulch is just more natural. And I know you've gotta redo it every once in a while, but in this scenario, it, it would be fine. I don't care. We just need to, to know where the paths are. And I would probably have to go out there and show you at this point.
Alright, so what if my guy came and had the weed eaters and the brush sheds and, and kind of blazed a rough path through there?
Well, if, if you want me involved in that, then, then I can show them where we put them to this point.
Yeah, that's.
Right? Yeah, 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 yeah. Yeah. That would be great.
Yeah, let's do that. And, and, let's do that and then, once that's done, let us know. And we can each make a visit kind of, you know, before the next meeting.
The problem is this time of year is kind of hard to tell because things are pretty dead, dead. Um, and so you make a path through and it's kind of like making a path on this paper, right? I mean, you can't tell the one thing from the other. And that's why I tried to mark off some spaces and I think I even, uh, painted off some spaces. I can do that. I've got plenty of that, uh, paint. And so I could go through, uh, marking paint. It's just kind of hard to do outside. It doesn't do like it should. But anyway, I could try to mark them if they're not really obvious, I guess.
Have we got a list of plants that we're gonna put in?
No, because I don't have a budget.
Well, that brings me back to my earlier point. I think, you know, what we're talking about now are tactics on how we're gonna put the park together. But what strategically, what do we want the park to represent? And I go back to, you know, a celebration park or something where, you know, I have the opportunity to celebrate my parents. You know, I can buy a plant. We put up a plaque. Bob, you know, Bob has given a donated plant on behalf of someone, so. Where plants are put in and we celebrate something, we, we do something other than just put a park in. It, it, it just seems to me, uh, I don't know.
You're saying it needs a theme?
I, I think it needs some, I think.
He's not really talking about a theme. He's talking about a, a place that you feel like you are, are part of, like you donated a rock.
Problem in search of a solution in search of a problem almost. I mean, I, I just, I don't know.
So that to me.
I just think if we're gonna do it, we need to do it well.
Could be added.
And not half tailor.
Well, you, we had, you and I, Bob, had talked about that somebody could donate funds that would be for a bench or a birdhouse. Or, and we would have different levels of, you know, a bench is gonna cost, I don't know, $500 and a birdhouse costs $50.
I go back to, we already have a donation made by Don Westcott. And obviously, we want that, that money to be used well and that park to be reflective. It, it, where that, where she's gonna be proud that she's involved in it.
Yeah.
And, you know, we would be willing to put up money as well, too, to put in some plants like camellias. Where you have evergreens where the park doesn't look dead in the winter. And you have a combination of native and, and, and evergreens in there. Because if it looks dead all winter, nobody's gonna go in there. Of course, nobody's.
Well, the ponds and the, the cedars look actually pretty healthy right this minute. They look nice. And they're low, because the ponds are kind of babies. They, there's green right in your face, not way up there.
But, yeah, camellias are incredibly blood maintenance. I mean, it's just, you know.
But they are expensive.
Let me just.
Well, but I go back to Bob and Judy and others, if we get people to want to participate. You put in some beautiful plants and you give credit to those people who put them in.
How, how do we get people to participate? I mean, we, we can't get people to donate stuff for Marvin Day. I mean, I can't, I can't get people to look for, there's not very many, as many people in this community that have businesses.
I can't, people show up for free donations.
I mean.
No, that's a good question. No, I mean, that's a great question.
We, we can't get another board member on this board. We can't get people to show up to meetings.
Next meeting.
We can't, I mean, I'm all for giving people an opportunity to do a memorial for somebody or in honor of somebody. But Derek can't get people to do donations for the disc golf course. I mean, we have holes up to, for sponsorships. We can't get people to do that.
I mean, that, that is very telling.
Are we, are we allowed to put, Kim, are we allowed to put up, maybe Hunter is the right person to ask, but. Are we allowed to put a sign up on, on Providence Road at the park? Where we have like a, you know, almost a historical plaque for Marvin. You know, this celebration park for Marvin and the history of Marvin.
You mean on the, in the pocket park?
Yeah.
Sure. It's our, it's our land. Sure.
And then have, or be able to, to give somebody, you know, a company recognition that, you know, CBS or something, I don't know. But where they get, where they get advertising is people drive by. And there's a reason for people to wanna put in plants, you know, and keep it up. And I know that takes time and I know it takes effort. But I just don't wanna part, just me personally, I'm just really concerned that if we do this and we, and we're depending on volunteers all the time to take care of this thing. I don't know.
It's gonna fall, it's gonna fall back on staff.
Yeah, I think it is eventually.
Well, and that's why I thought, you know, when we look at that map again, right? It, it, it is kind of what it is. It's a parking lot that'll mostly serve people maybe having lunches, you know, at their little thing there. And, and there'll be a nice, kind of close to that parking lot manicured area for the, you know, couple of benches and seats like that. And then a simple path through the, the wooded area, kind of like our other park, you know? And, and, you know, uh, in understanding that it doesn't look great right now, that there really hasn't been a lot of attention focused to it other than clearing and stuff like that, you know?
But to your point, here's what I'm thinking, right, when you look across the street, this guy built those berms.
Yeah.
To me, they look amazing, right? The fresh plants and clean ground covered in pine straw, like, that's manageable. If we take it down, leave a few trees if necessary, or we bring in plants like that and, and you, you get that picture, you know, you add the paths in, but, I mean, you have that clean, beautiful look of pine straw or mulch on the ground and plantings all throughout. I don't care what they are.
They're evergreens, what I'm talking about.
Yeah, I, I mean, they could be made of plastic. It looks good.
They look great.
So, so, so to your point then, we, I, I, I would feel better if we had goals for it. Because if the goal is as low a maintenance as possible, then that's different than native habitat. Because that's not, I mean, it's a little bit, I mean, it's better than an empty burn. That's absolutely true. But there's no pollinators that are happy over there, well, there's not any out right now, but that, that's shrubs. And it's better than it could have been, absolutely. But on a scale, it's kind of down here to me. But that's my perspective and my perspective is clearly very odd. So it depends on what you want over there. Right now on thi, well, it's gone. Right now on this side right here, if we do nothing, it will be golden rod, this, I mean, this tall. Um, and it was, in my mind, gorgeous last year, but other people are gonna say, oh, yeah, no, that's not for me. So, again, I may not be your person to, to handle this. Um, I, I was given the structure of the, the cottage garden was already there, so I, I can't really mess that up too much, so. And I'm, I'm taking care of that stuff. So maybe this needs to be a park gig and you guys do what makes everybody comfortable.
So to package it all up, you wanna kind of just take this summary of thoughts to counsel?
Yeah.
And just, and then give staff direction?
Yep.
Is that fair?
Yep.
Good.
Cause I don't wanna.
Yep.
I wanna talk about Marvin Day.
Yep.
Yeah.
It's awesome you could throw that.
What you doing here?
Pocket park?
Checking in.
It should already be on that.
Did you guys need me to bring that?
Alright, uh, next item on the agenda is discussion of spring litter cleanup event. Um, I think, uh, that's gonna be for me to talk about. We, uh, did have a conversation about when we were gonna do it. Um, I think we landed on May 7th, which will be the day that we do that. It, it's passed a little bit when a lot of the other communities do it around Earth Day or 20, but kind of still within that couple of week period. But it's also, you know, a little bit closer to Marvin Day event, so.
What day? I'm sorry.
Saturday, May 7th.
Saturday, May 7th. And, um, I already am, am discussing some things with my neighborhood HOA board. Um, and I've already kind of planted that date as when we're gonna do our spring cleanup in our neighborhood. So, um, I, I was at the HOA president's meeting the other day and there was a lot of good stuff there, you know, that the, the village talking about the garbage and other things like that. But, uh, it wasn't, wasn't really well attended, you know, there were, there were a couple of key communities.
Yeah, six neighborhoods, you know.
Um, but, but, um, you know, I think this is something, once again. But but um you know, I think this is something once again, you know, we'll wanna advertise out as much as we can.
One thing I would recommend is us kinda working out the wording for how this is gonna be organized. Cause if we were if we're gonna rely on the HOAs to gather groups together, there's kinda no it.
Yeah.
It'll be three neighborhoods on two road sides on 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 Saturday.
I know we've talked about this a thousand times, but is there any way to motivate that group differently?
I'm open to suggestions.
I don't know. We just keep going in circles.
I mean.
Cause they're such a great group theoretically.
No, it is. And I was I I was at the meeting. Joe was at the meeting. Jamie and Andy were there. Wayne was there. Everybody was there except Rob. Council was there in order to listen and try to like answer questions if they came up. I was very disappointed with the lack of people that were there. I'm hoping maybe once we're in Village Hall, maybe that'll be a draw for people to start coming in.
At least one.
They can at least at least one time. They can at least come in and see it. I mean, my neighborhood wasn't there. I was disappointed in that.
Mine sure wasn't.
Yours wasn't. I mean, most of them were. No, Canterbury Creek wasn't there. I mean. Broad Path wasn't there. I don't think Marvin Creek was there.
Marvin Marvin Creek wasn't.
Okay, Preserve wasn't there.
Nope.
I mean, Wanton Chase wasn't there. Providence Glen wasn't there. I mean, there was six neighborhoods there.
Has anyone asked them what it would take to get them to show up for it?
I mean, I I mean, maybe that's.
The first one was really well attended. The first one that we held, that we held at Firethorn.
Month ago.
It's September.
Yeah.
It it had like probably like fifteen HOAs there.
We had we had a bunch and Can- Canterbury Field has a new. I tell you, one of the problems is there's such change at the top of the HOAs. Canterbury Field's got a new president.
But that's just one. Like mine's been there for years and she didn't show up.
Honestly, we've got some presidents of HOAs. I think they just wanna be.
They just wanna be the president of HOA, but.
I just think it's a resume builder.
No, it is. Yeah, no, they just want the name.
I really do.
But my thing is if they can't show up, then send somebody else from their board. You have other people from their board that can come in and and at least figure out what's going on. And and it's extremely, I mean.
I will ask mine. He's new. So and when we had the same president for probably twenty years. So he's new and he's willing to do it.
Send me his information.
I will I will ask. I will. And I will ask him what would make him, you know, show up. And there's two other people on the board. He can send one of them. I live with one of them. They can go.
For the life of me, what I don't understand is especially with, you know, we're gonna go with the new waste removal company. I'd wanna be there so I could share the information with the people I represent in the neighborhood.
Yeah.
That's the point.
There's gonna be a there's gonna be a torrent of information going out over the next month.
But my point is I'd wanna be on the lead on that and and help my neighbor. I I just don't understand.
I mean, maybe that I mean, maybe it just needs to be like a matter of calling people and just saying what's what's up.
We don't have phone numbers for most of them.
Oh, we can get them. We know enough people in this community. We can get phone numbers for these people.
Was Amber Maddis there or Tullmore?
Wayne was there.
Wayne was Amber Maddis. Tanya wasn't there.
Yeah, Tullmore wasn't there.
And I guess that the the question is more not why don't you show up, obviously.
It's a good one though.
I don't know. I kinda I kinda wanna ask that question.
But what would make this important to you?
Well, and if you can't show up, who on your board could show up?
Exactly. It doesn't have to be.
Here here's one of the interesting dynamics that cause Mike Gilboy was the first one that did this. Three years ago, four years ago, right? And some of those early ones were very well attended.
Very well attended.
Right? Now, there did become uh within the community, it it was like there was almost a political aspect of it. That that people thought was happening, which.
It wasn't.
It it which it wasn't, but that was the perception that was going around. Now, what I what I will say is that the last two meetings, I appreciated the fact that. There was a very heavy town and village presence there to be there to answer questions and stuff like that. But I don't know if that's something that other people see is a deterrent. Because because if I just went to those two meetings without, I think the village runs those meetings.
And they shouldn't be. They should they shouldn't be setting them up. They shouldn't be running them. Christina shouldn't be talking unless a question has been asked like. That should be the HOA president's meeting. That's my opinion.
I I see what you're saying, cause I've been to one. I kinda thought it was.
No.
I didn't really think it, but when you say it like that, I.
And 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 I don't know if that, you know, and and that's not because I think having. A representative from the village, you know, or or something like that.
Different than them. They're the ones setting up for it.
Than all of them sitting up front. And and that almost happened because. Mike Gilboy, I I I think he's trying to 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 help, but. He he's very hands off at those meetings, you know, because.
Well, mine, yeah.
Those those need to be meetings run by you guys, not by staff.
I will say I do volunteer to help them with their agenda and minutes, just so there is a record that can be distributed.
Agenda and minutes, but you're not running the meeting. You, Christina, me, Joe, anybody on council should not be running those meetings. We are merely there to listen.
And I'm just bringing that up because.
I I think it's a great point. I and I think Mike should be running the meeting. And Mike is acquiesce to the councils pretty much take over the meeting.
Yeah, we're not. I'm not doing that. And staff shouldn't. Staff doesn't get paid to do that.
And they're they're in us. They're in us part of the problem.
Can you talk to Mike about it?
Yeah, I will. Because anyway, um yeah. And if Mike doesn't wanna do that, then we need to find another HOA president that will that will run the meeting. Because I and I do think, you know, because the one, you know, the one I couldn't make the last meeting, but the one earlier.
Oh, we need to move on. I'm sorry. This is the agenda.
This this they're talking about um.
They were talking about spring litter cleanup.
We were. How to get people involved.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But yeah, we were talking about going back through the HOA.
I got you.
So we got some, Bob, you talked about.
I've talked. I've talked.
And then and then if I need to call some HOA presidents, I'm happy to.
Yeah, and I I I wanna make the point that it it's not against Mike.
No, no, no.
No, no, no.
Just a- as I see it, that's my perception, you know, that it's become more of a a village run.
And it shouldn't be.
I think it's a legitimate one.
When's the spring litter cleanup?
Saturday, May.
So so May seventh, um generally we start earlier, about eight o'clock.
Do we meet at the bar?
Um yeah, I think we're gonna do that again and.
Eight o'clock at the bar. Austin, can you just?
And 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 what I what I'll commit to doing.
Solid details this time, cause last time I really didn't know how to instruct people.
Okay, so.
And and what I'll commit to doing, if I can get a list from Austin, is I'll reach out individually to each of the HOAs.
Okay, and I'm having a meeting.
Uh Wednesday night or Thursday night with my board, so I will bring it up to them.
Okay, so I'll I'll reach out to each of them, just say, hey, this is what we're doing, you know, just to have a conversation.
I just have email addresses. I don't have phone numbers.
I'll I'll figure it out. Yeah.
Sorry, uh there's an all day barn rental that day. Would. Are you gonna leave the park and go out?
Why don't?
We're just gonna.
If it's May seventh, why don't we meet at Village Hall? Meet at Village Hall, yeah.
Yeah.
Alright, so Austin, a blur. Villatall meets eight o'clock. Get your instructions. And then.
At eight AM?
At eight AM. Get your instructions and then John will tell you where to go and pick up and we'll have vests there and bags.
We'll send them to the trails.
How do you okay, what area are we cleaning up?
I think it's gonna depend on how many people show up.
So so what what I'm gonna try to do is I'm gonna reach out first to the to the HOA folks, right? They're gonna tend to wanna do their own neighborhoods, which we're fine with, you know? But then there's a lot of folks that might show up that aren't within HOAs. And those are the ones that we would assign specific roads to.
Do you want my high school kids? Do you want me to ask them?
Heck, yeah.
Yeah, and and I don't know if that other group is still around, but that group of.
What time is or is this ending?
As soon as they're done picking up all the trash.
Yeah, u- usually it's like eight to ten.
I mean, I don't know if.
Ten AM, eleven AM?
But it might as well.
Eight to eleven.
Yeah, eight to eleven, and if people die early, they can leave early.
Yeah.
I might as well send. I mean, I had twenty-five kids show up one day.
Yes.
Yeah, that 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 would be great.
And they actually weren't. We ran out of stuff today.
And they're the ones that we, you know, we could.
They're part of the IB program.
So do you need us to get vests and bags or do you have, isn't there like a group that we can contact that they drop off?
Group that they did drop off all that stuff. I yeah, I've got her uh contact information.
Okay, you'll take care of that?
I'll I'll reach out to her.
Again, from a marketing, do we wanna tie this into Trees for Trash?
If we can, yeah, let's get some free trees.
They'll give us free trees.
Yeah.
For every twenty-five.
Yeah, for pounds of trash, yeah.
So you know, if we if we're promoting this on the website or I don't know how we're gonna go about it. Or if we send flyers to HOA presidents through text or emails, we say, hey, it's gonna be part of Trees for Trash. How to promote the thing?
Do do we know how many poundages?
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five tree. So, okay, awesome. Twenty-five pounds, we get a free tree. So we're gonna be picking up.
These are nice trees.
Okay.
Trees for Trash is what we're picking up for.
Trees for Trash.
So every twenty-five pounds of trash we pick up, we get a free tree to be planted in Marvin.
Twenty-five pounds for each tree.
Think uh Mr. Worthington.
Be planted in Marvin.
Marvin Elmenery.
Who's not there anymore.
They lost him.
He got a great job, but they've got somebody great, Dr. Spencer.
Well, he was he was wanting to participate um with free planting over there. Do you know the new principal, Kim?
I've met him. He's very nice, Dr. Spencer.
I'd love to get a meeting with him to see if he'd be interested in putting plants on the property.
I'm sure that he would be. He's great. He came from, he actually lives in the reserve, so he's right outside of Marvin.
What Mr. Worthington guy?
Somewhere on the east coast. His um kinda where he came from, his his.
Over toward Edington.
Yeah, his um in-laws needed, his wife needed to move, could be closer to them, and he got a great job.
Well, I gotta tell you, he he's a heck of a guy.
I will tell you, as much as staff loved Mr. Worthington, they were thrilled with Dr. Spencer.
Oh, super.
Which is great.
That's wonderful.
Yeah.
That's wonderful.
Okay, so I'll reach out to the lady at Litter Bugs or the county, whoever can get us the um bags and.
Yeah, Austin, put that in there that vests and bags will be.
I already have that.
Perfect. And I would say email blast, newsletter, on the website.
We're on.
Twitter, Facebook, all all the places.
Where do they go?
Okay. And I'd start putting it out now.
And and get me whatever your most current list is and I'll start.
I'll send you the list. If anybody has a mockup of a flyer, um I'm not a graphic artist, so if you want me to send out a flyers, send me what you want me to send.
I've I've got.
I can just do I can just do blurbs on in the newsletter, but.
Let me work those uh drafts of the flyer.
I'll work. Cool.
And then if we have one, we can just recycle it going forward.
Yeah.
Oh, I've got plenty of that. Okay, good deal.
Oh, I'll bet.
Yeah, I know.
Alright, Marvin Doug? I'm gonna call Joe. He wants to listen. I mean, deputize, deputy, deputy, de- de- deputize.
Deputize.
Deputize. Today, I got my gold star, so I thought I'd wear it.
Citizens are asked, huh?
No, Tommy just likes me. My own little badge for the day.
Do you have a taser?
No, oh, no, but he did offer it to me. He was like, you need those. I was like, I.
Take it to the meeting.
You won't stop talking.
When Joe starts asking the same things over there.
I mean, I'm like, you are seriously legitimately killing me right now.
I thought you were gonna have like a breakdown over there.
I was like, we literally just said the same thing five minutes ago. Listen, he does it in every meeting. He's gotta be crazy. Alright, I'm I'm ready. He's not answering the phone. Don't call me. Let's go.
Are you ready?
Yep.
Alright, this is Lisa Kaiser. Lisa is uh jumping on board with us to kinda. Help us get to the finish line with Marvin Day. So you will be hearing from her. Or is this your? Yes, you'll be hearing from her in various ways or communicating with her these next couple of months. This this is Bob and Christina Erlebohr.
I'll put you on speakerphone.
Jamie Oaxter, their own staff, John Goldbord, Kim's council liaison. Since we just hammered through a lot of this, um my goal is to not go through it all again. Unless there is a very pertinent update. Um so what we do, we just have a giant workbook. That we constantly update and Jill takes notes, Jamie takes notes. And so we're just gonna kinda baptize Lisa in this um very quick. And she's got a lot of experience in doing this stuff, so she's gonna um just kinda help package it all up for us and bring it to the finish line. So we don't have any updates on the budget page, do you think?
Uh, nothing I know of.
Just uh the numbers have changed a little because I'm starting to get minimums in from contracts from food trucks. Christina wants it. We'll see that number continue to increase under food and ice cream trucks as that.
Just one question about that, you know, I I know there was a lot of conversation that Joe had and. Dan wasn't able to be there, but did we end up getting some clarification about those minimums? Because Joe seemed to keep thinking, well, these guys, you know, haven't said that, you know, we even need food minimums. Whereas Dan, you know, a- a- and I think is expected, yeah, that they're all gonna be looking for minimums. Joe was gonna.
Not not one I talked to did not have a minimum.
Yeah.
Everyone had a minimum.
I've been talking with each of them to get a contract and a quote in writing of what their deposits and minimums are. Um so each of them is starting to send that to me. One, uh the pizza people, Pizza de.
De Chico.
De Chico. They actually are waiving their minimums. They feel that the amount of hours that they're gonna be at the event. That they feel that's not a problem, that they will hit their minimum, that they're gonna hit it. So they're not even gonna put it into the contract, uh which is nice. Those are the only, um I think one issue that we have to discuss today is we we haven't secured a taco truck, to my knowledge. Or the kids' kind of fare food truck. So um I don't know what the.
I think we just kick that back to Dan.
Kick it back to Dan.
Yeah, and like and let him follow up with that if he needs help. Dan, if you need help getting that last food truck, then you know, reach out to me or Lisa. But I don't wanna eat up too much time just our head over.
Just real quickly, I got shut down by two food trucks for that, thank you for the taco trucks, um on my third try. I'm sure we'll find one. I still don't. Not found the Carnival food folks. Alright, thanks. It's like phone calls and things like that, but the specific request, I'm I haven't found that that exists yet.
Alright, thank you so much.
Joe, we can hear you.
Oh, sorry, um uh I wanted to just make a quick comment.
Sure.
Okay, um in regards to the minimums, this is this is only related and if you will find. That food trucks, when they, when it's a new event, they're they get nervous because they don't know who may, who's gonna attend. What I think Eric was saying with the car show, that these guys, he didn't need to do that. Because there was a history of who showed up when we did these events. So that's all it's related to. So if a food truck is gonna be at the um park, that's a different issue. You may need a minimum there. Um and in fact, I even said in the meeting on Friday with Eric, I said, let's circle back to that taco truck. Because that taco truck, whatever event that he has, he may say, hey, I'm gonna go with Eric's event. Because I know Eric's is gonna be better and he may cancel his existing. I think we were trying to find that. That's. And I asked him to do that because this uh all of what Eric has told me is he's never had to do that. Because uh they've had great experiences in the past and they ask him to please invite us back when. Uh if you have another event and that's where um that's where that whole minimum thing comes from. E- e- you know, that about e- even when we do private events, we just don't know what the volume's gonna be.
We got it.
That's all I had.
Yeah, so so it it, you know, the waving of the minimum would would really even only be pertinent for. You know, companies that have worked with the car show in the past that know they're gonna make it. We shouldn't necessarily expect or plan that we're not gonna need to pay minimums for any of the other ones.
Yeah, and and assuming that that food truck will be at the car show and not, you know, cause again, if it's at the park. And that's where they're gonna be, that you may require, cause we just don't know. There's no way to sign up. We're gonna actually have a sign up. There's no way to sign up. We're gonna actually have a sign up, and we're gonna know exactly how many cars are signed up ahead of time, and then we usually get X amount percentage more on day of, the people who come day of. Sometimes they wait because of weather or whatever, so, but we'll have a, a better understanding of who will actually be, be there, so.
And, and, and correct me if I'm wrong, but I think the intent with the food trucks is that any of them that are at the park or at the health fair will eventually also end up over at the car show slash, you know, main event, you know, in the late afternoon, evening, so.
I, I am not involved in that part of it.
Yeah.
I think we just talked about where the trucks are gonna be located. I think we decided to put them closer to the high school, where the bathrooms are, and up above parking, if you will, and all the tents would be up there, as well as food trucks, and then all the cars down below, and the kids' parking lot, as well as the spectators who come to look. So I don't know where you have assignments at, or who's going where, so.
Yeah, when, when you said closer to the bathrooms, you mean the car show specifically using the bathrooms at the actual high school versus using the bathrooms down by the stadium, is that correct?
Yeah, the stadium, I don't know, I assume will be open for the band later that night, but yes, that's correct. They will, they open up the high school facilities, bathrooms, so people can walk up there and use the restroom. That's what they pay the janitor for, and that's what those costs are for.
Okay, so, sorry if I missed this, but let's, let's, let's nail this down. Joe, the Pizza D C, whatever, the pizza guy, is that the same guy that Eric has used?
My understanding is it is.
So is Eric gonna reach out to him and get him at the high school for no minimum?
That's my understanding, based on Eric's last.
Alright, we got it, Joe.
Yes.
What about Northeast Treats?
That we don't know, he didn't know Northeast Treats, so that may be a bogey that we just don't know.
Okay.
He wasn't familiar with them, but he said, yeah, that, that was totally fine, but.
And Eric's checking on the taco truck, and as soon as you have that information, you'll let Jill know?
Yes.
Okay, alright, I'm done talking to you, Joe. Jill, the coffee truck, we're good?
They sent their minimums, which.
I mean, I, I mean, we're gonna get through this stuff.
Yeah, I mean, do you wanna hear about it today?
No, I mean, but we're good. We got it.
Yeah, they sent, they sent a contract, deposits, minimums, all that.
Kid fare food, do we have that yet?
It hasn't been procured.
Okay. Ice cream truck, we know what we're doing with that, with Bob's guy?
I've asked him to send over his contract as well, since there was a little bit of confusion necessarily over.
Okay.
Minimums, waiting to receive it.
Okay, perfect, okay.
I've got a point to him as well.
Perfect.
Dan, anything else for rent?
Is Joe still on the phone?
Yep. No, don't.
I don't know if you guys can hear me or can you hear me?
No, it's okay, go ahead.
Uh, I think Joe's on the phone, is there, is there something, question for me?
Hang on, Joe.
Something I didn't hear, this taco truck, is what I heard?
Yes. We're, so, yes, the, the car show guy is gonna check with his taco guy, who I think is your taco guy, and gonna try to figure that out.
Only because they're, the taco guy supposedly has.
Joe, stop!
But.
Why don't you take your phone, I don't think he can hear you.
Joe, don't talk. Dan, go ahead.
Your pod's gonna work.
So I should back off, get it, maybe stop it, yes.
Yes, Dan, you wait for now. We'll let you know. Okay, Joe, we're good. Yeah, I think Bob has a question for you, though.
Hey, Joe?
Yep.
Just a quick question, based on vast experience, do, at a car show, I've not been to one, do you have a continual flow of people, and how many people do you introduce to the place?
Yeah, that's probably a better, I mean, when people know about it, you've got, number one, I, I can't imagine any less than a hundred and eighty cars, which means at least a hundred and eighty people because each person, some bring more, more than one car, but then there's usually, just because of word of mouth and all the flyers we put out, the spectators come because they know there's an event, and they tend to, so there tends to be more than what, however many cars that we are, but my guess is, in fact, I'm more concerned about, we may have to have a cutoff based on the spacing. We may say, okay, the first two hundred cars to sign up, because it ended up getting a little bit tight, but you, you constantly have a flow.
I got it, Joe.
We're good, perfect.
Got it.
Perfect.
Okay.
Then the answer's in my corner. Thanks.
Yep. I think he's gonna listen.
Alright, so I, I think we're good here on the food trucks, anything else on that?
Nope.
Can we change, while we're talking about the trucks and ice cream, can we change times on this sheet?
Sure, we can change.
Well, I'm thinking about, the reason I was asking you the question is, the ice cream truck, we have ten to two thirty, four and a half hours over at the barn, which I, I think the Raptor Center's gonna be gone, I think traffic's gonna be way down. I think he's gonna do a lot better if we move him earlier over to the car show.
Yeah.
So I was thinking, having the ice cream from ten to twelve over at the barn, and then move him over to the car show, and he'd be at the car show from twelve thirty to, to seven o'clock.
The only reason I'd say a little bit longer is because the pony rides don't start until twelve, and that's gonna be a big draw at the par.
So twelve to one.
Yeah.
So let's do, so ten to one, ten, let's do ten to one.
And then one thirty to seven.
Correct.
Okay. You guys can update that?
That makes sense.
I do think you gotta be transparent with the other vendor about that, that all.
Which, which vendor, Dan? Nor East?
Yeah, Nor East, he nodded.
Okay. I mean, I'm honestly, I'm not that worried about it. There's only seventy people there. They wanna get these pants and leave, and. Okay, we'll go next.
Health Fair? There's no pertinent changes for discussion there.
Okay.
Five K, we are super close to signing a contract, and we're gonna make it happen, one way or the other. So once we finalize that, those details, I'll just give you guys an update when we do. Blood drive. Jamie, what's their times, I wanna change that on the schedule, is it eight to twelve?
Um, they're gonna come in at seven forty-five to park the truck, and then they'll be ready at eight AM. They're planning to stay until noon, but if it's busy, they can stay longer.
Okay, perfect.
And they'll start pushing on their end, website signup, just a reminder on the board, are you just doing times right now?
Yeah, I just wanted to.
Okay.
Different, different time. Disc golf, Kim, you'll be happy, they are gonna do the logo discs, a higher quality disc for five dollars apiece.
Okay.
So.
Good job.
Two fifty on the discs, and then the eighty dollar setup, so three thirty is gonna be our cost.
Awesome. Good job. I was having a heart attack. I was like, those are the most expensive discs that I've ever seen.
Two seventy, but.
Good job, good job. Heck, yeah, it does.
Nature Walks, Bob, we're still good there?
That, that's Christine.
Information coming to Jill.
I just, we just need to talk. I didn't get any copy for the website, so I just wrote something, I ran it by Derek, he was fine with it, so we're gonna throw it out there. We can make some changes after, but we gotta get something up there for now, and then we'll kind of tweak it as we go.
And you still need mine, I got.
For Cedar?
It was my, for, yeah.
I did the same thing for Cedar, I didn't have a brochure, but I just linked to their website, so just click here to visit Cedar Hill and learn more.
Okay, yeah.
For now.
Yeah.
Um, but yeah.
If we wanna add more and make it more inviting.
Yeah, I, I'll do that, I just.
Yeah, I did not remember that at all.
Yeah.
Yes. And I, I still need the contact information for the two vendors for the ponies, so we can start reaching out to them for their forms and their contract, and get them set up in QuickBooks for payment and all that stuff.
Okay.
So if you could just email me their names and email addresses, that'd be great.
So does that get us through pony rides? Yeah, there's nothing, there's nothing more that I have.
Joe, that's everything you needed.
Is the equine at four?
Yeah, I'm gonna update the schedule. I have to change the schedule for meet and greet at the Littol and for the Cedar Hall.
That's alright. Food trucks, we just went through that. So we.
I don't have meet and greet.
Yes.
I don't have a meet and greet form.
Everything is great for garden tours, I got the bios for New Thank You, and the only thing we talked about was what we're gonna put up on the website, it's gonna say click here to view the gardener's bios, but I think we're gonna kind of redact their address until we're closer to the event, for the people that are allowing them to come to their homes.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
Just so, because people don't read, and I don't want people showing up like.
Oh, hey, it's an open house.
Next weekend, you know, so we'll just say, it actually says in there the address will be.
But it'll be on the maps, right?
Yeah, so it'll be on the map.
And they'll put it on the website once we get closer.
Yeah. The art is too, I mean, I just don't want people, yeah, showing up for the next couple of months thinking it's open house from now until forever. That makes total sense.
Crazy question.
Yes, sir.
Pentecost, is that the name of a company, or is this a?
It's his last name.
That's his last name. That's our graphic artist.
Being a Christian, I do not relate Pentecost.
I was raised Pentecost.
Okay, got it.
Did I miss the open house, the Littol Open House?
No, it's, it's probably just.
I didn't get one either, I don't think.
There's really not much on there.
Except for the fact that we were just making our times, and I was supposed to work on that, and I forgot.
I can just assign two of y'all to, like, three different slots or something.
Why don't we, we gotta do that?
Just let Austin know.
Do you want me just to, to assign y'all and bring it up for the next time we meet? Y'all have a joint, y'all have a joint meeting again at the end of March, and that's something we can finalize about that point.
Okay, that's fine.
I feel like I wrote down what, what you all said last time, because I know that Joe and Jamie said they couldn't be there because of the car show.
I was thinking of doing like, doing two time slots, doing three different time slots, sticking, sticking two council members in each one.
That's fine. You come up with something, if we're gonna move it around, we'll move it around. Can you, can you do it?
I have it scratched out of my office.
Give it to us on Tuesday, and let us just look at it, and if we thumbs up or change it, then we're done with it, we don't talk about it again, yeah. We don't wanna talk about it again.
Now, I pretty much have Jean Stove confirmed, I just have to talk to him one more time.
Okay.
Just the one other thing that I did bring up at the joint meeting, and I think we confirmed, is that I could offer Cedar Hill's membership.
We, yeah, we were fine with that, yeah. We just need to just tell, tell Jamie so that she puts them down as a bonus.
I already put it, it's on there.
Okay, yeah. It'll look at there, right on top of the rose. On it, anybody got that? Can we be, can we, all right, Derek?
What did you say?
I don't think there's anything.
Nothing new for Firethorn.
I have everything that I need for them, just, I'm wondering about this note up there, table at the high school from five to six.
They will, they will bring the table to the high school, they're gonna set it up, so we need to figure out where at the high school we're gonna tell people to set up their tents, their booths, their tables for information, and.
Did you say booths or boo- booths?
Booths.
Booths.
Booths. Booth is a, it's kind of like a ute for you. Anybody got that one in reference?
Nope.
Nope.
Way to watch movies, apparently.
I missed that one.
Did you get that one, Joe?
Kim, can you hear me?
Yes, I can, Joe, can you hear me?
Okay, one suggestion, a lot of times we've done things with the band and stuff like that, we actually allow some booths and even an ice cream truck to pull up inside next to the concession stand, and as long as we get approval from the thing, it takes them out of the parking lot, and then right where the bathrooms are for the band when they perform.
Hey, gone.
Bye, Joe.
So, 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 so putting tables and stuff in the actual stadium?
I put them, I put them right in front of the fence, so that. Joe, we can't hear you, bud. I would put them in front to, anybody, might not be concert time, and we may not want people going in yet, and I know Firethorn's gonna set up just from five to six. Alright, we're good. So, I think for tables, or booths, or tents, whatever people wanna set up, do it in front of the fence on the out, like, not in the stadium, but like, right in the front, like, right where you go in, have them all up along there, and then they can set up there, so, 'cause I know multiple people have asked, can I set up a table, can I set up a tent, can I set up a booth at the high school, so I think that's where we should have them, so I will communicate that to Firethorn.
So I'll miss who all's doing that, so I can measure out, I don't have much space.
Yeah.
On this, there we are.
You're fine, I'll catch up.
Firethorn will definitely have a table.
Yeah.
Okay. That's it for Firethorn.
Jill, I'll have it on the sponsorship page, it'll show up, who's bringing the table, who's bringing the booth.
Raptor Center. Raptor Center's good to go. I saw you sent that email, let me know if you get, and you push back. They have not sent me a flyer, just, I just made one, pulled information off their website, grabbed images, stolen, and put together.
Perfect.
Just one thing, when we're talking about the tables that we'll have at the high school.
Yep.
Is there a specific timeframe that will tell these folks to have it there?
I think if they want them there all day for the car show, they can show up and have it. Firethorn's not gonna do that, 'cause they've got their open house, so they just wanna come from five to six, 'cause they've got member guests that night, and they're not gonna be able to have staff there much past then, but I think just tell people if they wanna set up at nine thirty when the car show's setting up, they just need it to be torn down by ten o'clock.
Yeah.
Nine to nine?
Nine to nine, yeah.
Okay, I just didn't know.
Yeah, I think that's good.
Yeah.
Alright, Raptor Center, we're good with, okay. But if they do push back, Jill, let me know, okay?
Car show, we've kind of, Joe's kind of slid that over to the band.
Yep.
So that's all just kind of in the works, they're taking it and running with it, and it'll just be a repeat of everything they've done in the past, so shouldn't be any hiccups there, Jill's helping kind of manage any overlap or fistcross with the school, but that's gonna help us out a lot.
Closing that.
Concert, we're good there, nothing. You got the.
The stage, I sent the contract, so.
Yeah, I got it.
Jamie got it.
Thank you. Um, I know Joe's gonna have a conversation with Jamie Lyon about getting actual information, because Joe made a good point. If he gets hit by, hit by, hit by a bus, we don't know who the band is, when they're supposed to be here, how much they're gonna get, where we're getting the generators from, so Joe's.
There's a lot of moving parts there.
Yeah, so Joe's putting a call to Jamie to try to get some of that information nailed down, so as we get that, we'll let you know.
Can I, can I make a quick comment?
Nope.
It's just, it's more for Jill, 'cause Eric's working on the QR code for the car show flyer that we'll be handing out, and I will get him her email information, and then she, he can have on the QR code an attachment that tells all about what else is happening on Marvin Day. So Jill, be expecting that from Eric Berman.
Okay, thank you.
Glad you understood that. Yeah, okay, um, sorry.
What's next?
T-shirts.
Alright.
T-shirts.
Roll that, Jill.
I don't care.
Okay, so.
Do our thing here.
With t-shirts, I know we need to make some decisions soon and fast, but I'm having a hard time getting answers from anyone as far as what the strategy will be for t-shirts. I've asked, like, are we giving these away, are we selling them?
We haven't decided.
Right.
That's why you got no answers.
That creates.
We're supposed to decide today.
So that makes it hard for us to make decisions about quantities.
Yeah.
And what we're doing, if we haven't nailed down the strategy for them.
So last Tuesday, we were gonna talk, so we're, that was gonna be the first thing we talked about today, which it wasn't, but that's fine.
From a staff standpoint, we need the most simple plan possible.
What do you want that to be then? Tell, tell me what the most simple plan is.
Through all your questions, and then.
Well, I mean, if, if, if we're just gonna have, you know, staff and volunteers wear them, and offer them up for vendors to wear at the day of the event, that's fine. I mean, we have promised sponsors t-shirts and logos, so we have to kind of determine, are we making good on that? Is that gonna be good enough, you know?
Well, let's let that discussing decide.
Are we, are we bifurcating, because one of the things that was discussed is are we bifurcating t-shirts for the five K that might be included with their registrations versus t-shirts for the event?
Five K t-shirts.
Okay, so that's separate, and that's handled.
So I, can I have a question about that then? But we are still paying for them.
The five K t-shirts?
Uh-huh.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
For the, but they're getting.
So for every design, it costs more money, so if you, if you wanna keep it cheap and simple. So, so for every design, it costs more money. So if you, if you wanna keep it cheap and simple.
The 5K company does their own.
Is gonna be separate from the Marvin Day shirt.
Handled by the 5K company.
They do their own t-shirts.
We got it. This is, this is the Marvin Day shirt.
But you're not wrong. Yes, we're gonna pay two setup fees and we're gonna have two print runs of two different t-shirts.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
But one is gonna specifically say 5K and the one for Marvin Day is probably not.
That's being done on a different group.
Well, we're still paying for it though.
Yeah, but they're in.
Okay.
So, so then we're talking about the Marvin Day shirts, right? I don't, I don't know how you can justify just giving them away for free to everybody, you know? Because that's a lot of potential shirts and maybe it's only a certain amount. I do think, you know, that there needs to be something for staff and, and, and all of that, just so that people are identifiable throughout the day and throughout the events so that people kinda have go-tos.
So you have two ways of doing that, right? You could have the same t-shirt for everybody and then just put staff across the back or volunteer or whatever you want to, or you could have a different color.
A different color. It's much easier than most people.
I agree.
The, the one question I had about selling t-shirts was, um, the question then becomes, you know, this is, this event is, has in my opinion, three main venues, right? So are we planning to sell t-shirts at the elementary school in the morning, at the park in the afternoon and at the high school at night? Which if we are, that's okay, but then questions came up of who is gonna be the person who's selling them? What payment methods are we allowed to take at an event like that? Are we using?
No, don't look at me.
Or cash box.
I'm gonna throw it.
Who's taking the money?
I'm gonna throw it out there for you and say, it's your first, it's the first time, we should give t-shirts away and try to promote the hell out of this so that everybody's running around with their Marvin t-shirt, Marvin Day t-shirt on, so when it's number two, you can decide then.
I will say, I think we're looking really good with sponsorships and so can I, maybe I'll bring that up if you don't mind if I just switch gears really fast. Um, I've received twenty, or I'm sorry, I've received fifteen thousand dollars already in checks. I just heard that I'm getting five hundred more from Southern Gourmet and you received a check for how much?
A thousand.
A thousand, so we can add fifteen hundred to that. Um, I have another twenty thousand five hundred committed. An additional? Yes.
Yeah.
That's Chad's Auto, Compass Food Buy, Hickory Tavern, Jones Homes, um, Carolina Sports Cairo, Bud and Lion, Beechwood Homes at a thousand, so that's another committed.
The thousand that came in yesterday.
Okay, Beechwood came in.
Yeah.
Um, so we're doing really well with money, I feel like. So I do agree, t-shirts are great for people running around with t-shirts.
Okay, so.
Or we do a certain number and decide how much we wanna spend.
Sure.
Well, and that's, that was gonna be my other thing. If we sell them, we're buying them and then nobody, nobody wants to buy them. And then we have all these t-shirts. So, so I think giving them away is a good idea. I think get a different color for staff, boards, council, meaning the same color. We get something separate, so it's delineating different.
Yep.
Make sure every vendor has one, so anybody that is, so I can give them to Firethorn, we can give them to the Raptor Center people, we can give them to every person that shows up at, um, is a vendor at the health fair, the pony ride people can have ones. And then we just say, we're gonna order X number small, X number medium, X number large, extra large, and then you just. Joe had the idea of having the gun, this t-shirt gun and doing them out at the concert. That's super fun. That's really fun to do.
So do you, are you gonna go with Limpro? That's what I told them.
How much are they a piece?
Um, if you're looking at about six dollars, that's, so five hundred dollars.
So in this budget, I already have in here five hundred dollars for t-shirts and that's showing that we need thirty-five thousand in sponsorships and I'm right at thirty-five thousand five hundred committed or in. So we're looking, I mean, we're right on right now.
The smallest amount you can buy is a hundred from these guys.
Okay.
Yeah.
So.
I mean, at these prices, I'm sure they'll, they'll give you one for ten dollars a shirt.
So that's probably gonna be a setup fee of like around eighty bucks, so.
So we're at like about six hundred.
But that's for each change.
So we're at six hundred and thirty dollars for the t-shirts.
I don't think a hundred t-shirts is enough. I think we need to figure out if we need more than that, because you're talking about four different sizes.
I mean, at a minimum, we're gonna get, we're gonna spend six hundred and thirty dollars on t-shirts.
But is that what we should agree? Like, do we need to decide that now? Or does the council have to?
Just do two sizes?
Yes.
What sizes do you wanna do?
Meaning the large.
With extra large.
Yeah.
You want large and extra large.
Your extra large is, no, the extra large is no cost more, sorry, nothing. The two X's.
Do you want kid sizes?
I think we should talk to, I think we should talk to Lisa about it. She's done a lot of really big events.
Um, I think that, and this is just my opinion, I understand the staffing wise, if you're gonna give them away, I'd do it at your final concerts.
Of the gun.
And you can do the gun, the guns aren't cheap unless you know somebody who has one. They're about six hundred bucks.
Tie them up in front.
One of these guys.
One of the owl, the owl can do it.
Okay.
We're not gonna pay for it. They'll buy it.
Yeah. So, um, I don't know, you need to figure out how many volunteers you're gonna have. A hundred scenes with all of these events seems a little low, so I think that you probably need to budget two thousand and twenty-five hundred.
Okay.
To get a minimum, so that'll get your volunteers.
And then that might get our price down a little bit?
Could. I mean, and I don't know how many colors that you have in your screen.
That'll make a difference too.
You're gonna, there, I mean, you said eighty dollar setup, is that per color?
So the pricing that I have.
Usually it's per color, because each color is a different screen.
Right.
So the pricing I have is for six color front and one color back. So the sponsors are on the back, you have to get a black and white. Well, it's not black, you can pick a color that, that works, but it's a.
I mean, if you can knock some of those colors out, you're probably gonna save some money.
But she's got that included, um, in the price and at least, now, this was a couple of months ago that I got this price from her and I, everybody is telling me that all the prices are going up, but as of her original quote, um, it was five eighty-nine a shirt for a hundred or, you know, for a hundred. Uh, two hundred and fifty-one shirts goes down to five sixty-one.
I'd let Jill start having a conversation and just let Jill just take over. You figure out how many colors, the screen setup, all that stuff and just.
The other thing we decide, who's designing, no, so we, who's designing the t-shirt? Now, the graphic designer, if, if she has like a template and you all decide you just wanna plop in that owl logo and something that says Marvin Day and the year or, we just either you guys let us design it as a staff and put our heads together or we get it to the graphic designer to do.
Can I give an, can I?
Go ahead.
Um, it would really help us on a staff level if you all empower us to just make the decision with this and let us roll with it if you're comfortable and you trust us, because I feel like we need to get rolling on it and, um, we just need to empower, no? You're, you're gonna have to come to council for it. It's not, it's not this poor decision. I mean, I'm sorry, but. Well, in speaking to you, like. Just bring it up on Tuesday. I have, I have no doubt that everybody's gonna say, yeah, do it. Yeah. But you're gonna. And especially with Lisa's expertise on doing this, um. I'm not a graphic designer, I can't draw a stick figure. I'm fine with it, but you gotta get council to say it.
Limpro will do some of the work for you if you just ask them.
Just knowing that like us gathering questions, then coming back, so I guess what we need from a staff perspective in here and then with council, we need to know how many t-shirts you wanna give out. I think budget wise, we're looking really good. This doesn't even take into account how much we put aside for Marvin Day in our budget, which is five thousand dollars. Well, and I know Joe talked to Coles and they were planning on doing a decent amount, which is good. Via some other way, they're donating money, not a direct amount of money to us.
The, the food and ice cream truck number might, that's just like, um, only if worst case scenario happens and we're, we're on the line for minimums, which none of us really think is likely to happen. We think they're gonna make their minimums.
Coles isn't gonna write a chuck toss. Coles is going to offer sponsorship through like a non.
Well, they might. Joe talked to them yesterday.
It's back and forth, so I'm not gonna rely on that right now, I guess. So I think we're doing well with sponsorship money and what our budget is so far, but we need to know from all of you how many shirts you want? Are we giving them away? Are we charging for them? So if we're giving them away, how many shirts do we want to buy? Or how much total do we wanna spend? I don't think you want too many, because the Panthers games, they don't give away too many. So. So you have it, so it's like a thing. So, oh, I got one, you didn't, woohoo. You gotta make it like, not everybody's gonna get one.
Taking wishes out there. If we gave them, if, if we were to give the t-shirts away at the concert, why couldn't we promote the fact come, you know, part of being at the concert?
Sure, you might get a free t-shirt for first.
First, first a hundred people get a t-shirt.
To encourage people to bring the family and get out there.
But I would get your volunteers, their, the size that they wanna wear.
Make it a tool, make it a tool to create interest, don't just give them out.
Twenty-five hundred dollars for t-shirts, just dividing it by six dollars apiece. I think it was, came in a little bit less, but we'll have the different setup fees. That gives us around four hundred t-shirts.
And that's plenty of t-shirts.
Do you think that's plenty of t-shirts?
I think that's plenty of t-shirts. You'd have to take probably fifty off the top of that for like staff, town, council and vendors.
No, 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 no. More than that. No, it, okay, six dollars divided by, twenty-five hundred dollars divided by six dollars is four hundred and sixteen shirts. But they're less than six dollars and we're giving them all out for free, plus council, staff, volunteers.
I wouldn't bet on them being less than six dollars. Don't bet on it. When it's all said and done, you've got all your different fees.
We have to do this. The platinum gets like twenty-five.
It depends.
Okay.
And the colored shirts cost more than the white shirts, if that's what you decide to do. So know that too.
Alright, so we just need, we need y'all.
I just handed her Liz's information.
Okay. Just your input, recommendation to empower staff, which was awesome. Jamie can package that up and bring to you guys Tuesday night. Tuesday night, we gotta go.
Yeah.
Right? Like it's done after Tuesday?
Yeah, I mean, that's what we said on last Tuesday. We said t-shirts will be the first thing. We, you guys make a recommendation, staff makes the decision on Tuesday and you guys go.
Question. Who, does town have to approve the design of the t-shirt or can that be a part of staff and graphic designer?
That's what Jamie. Okay, so this is like a sub meeting and then she's the liaison of, she's the council member, so we're going to take it to council, council has to approve it. That's how we get.
Tuesday.
Yes.
The reason I'm asking is I'm wondering if you want us to come with multiple designs for you to look at or just one and hope that you guys don't have fifty changes to it, you know what I mean? Like in the interest of time.
Have you been to one of our meetings?
No, have you? I've heard.
Just don't stress about it.
If you stress, I'm just, I wanna make sure I give you what you want next Tuesday.
No, don't. I'm, I'm gonna bring it. I'm gonna bring it next Tuesday.
I'm gonna make one suggestion about this, having done a, a similar event. The back, you have your sponsors back there, you have the largest, the, the ones that give you the most money.
They have the biggest phone.
Have the biggest logos. The logos are one color, so the back of the t-shirt is the other color, if you will. And you just, you make them pretty obvious who's the bigger ones and the smaller and you, at some point you cut it off and you either put their names or you, um, just don't include them.
Phone, please.
And that's your back.
Yeah.
And then your front, however big you wanna put the owl or whatever you decide in front of it. You could do it, you could do it big.
The whole reason we did the logo was to put it on the damn t-shirts.
So, does this board have any other recommendations? So when I prep it, um, I have what all your, your feelings are for taking it to council on Tuesday?
I bought some colors.
I would have the volunteers and the vendors and all that a color and everything else is white.
No, God, please not orange.
Yeah, some color that looks okay on humans.
How about that yellow that the owl is?
Why was he gonna wash out?
No, like you want like neon, like bright. Oh dear lord, no. Okay, so.
Okay, if she's gonna, she's gonna run with it, I'm gonna forward it to her and.
Oh, you got that, okay.
Jamie, just, just come with some recommendations.
So we're doing white t-shirts.
I got it.
And I guess I'm gonna disagree with councilwoman.
I'm not wearing a white t-shirt.
Then you bring your suggestions.
Yes.
For them to look at.
That's what I was saying.
If you come to me with it, I'd expect.
I'm doing hot pink.
That's better than yellow.
It's fine, I'll match my heart hat.
I was suggesting a paler blue, but.
I would go with it.
I'm, I'm running with it, so.
Run with it.
I would go with a.
Y'all are gonna wear it proudly, right?
Are we good on t-shirts?
Yes. And then we'll talk to Morgan to get a better idea. I think we'll just prep that and then bring it to council.
You got a week.
Okay.
Alright.
That's perfect.
By our words, we're still talking to Jamie Lyon about.
Didn't they meet with the person? Didn't they go out there?
I don't know, we didn't.
We had an update.
I mean, that's not gonna affect anything.
He's out of the country, I think so, but yes, they did. And did, did they walk the property? I think so. And they say, okay? I think that they were. Still thinking about it after they walked the property? I think the last meeting we had, he was going like the next day or something, but then he was going out of the country for the weekend, so.
Doesn't it take a little longer?
He's in Spain. No, he was like going and then coming back, yeah. Okay, alright.
Alright, last thing, last thing we need to talk about is, we talked about having the 5K with a charitable cause. I, I don't think we should do that in the first year. Um, we've got to figure out if we can retrieve any money. We do have a sponsor that's interested in making a large donation potentially to the race and we would be, put their name on the 5K shirt. They, if they wanna do it, they want to have the proceeds go to a charitable cause. Um, I think something that fits them as a business would be, you know, okay to go with and I, I just don't wanna get into an argument, um, over whose charity is better than the others. Um, Coles is potentially offering to write a seventy-five hundred dollar check to be the sole sponsor of the 5K and proceeds. Well, we were gonna pitch the, um, the library, the fund to build the new library um, because they do the, you know, the children's literacy stuff and support. Uh, it's going, it's gonna be on our side of town. It's going in next to Cuthbertson High School. Well, yeah, Western Union, uh, library.
I think, I think, let's let Coles come back to us and then we can have an actual discussion once we know what.
May I comment?
No. Joe talked to me yesterday, I think.
Yeah, but he still doesn't know anything.
May I comment?
Yeah.
Okay, so I talked to both Coles yesterday and also, um, the board trustee Julie Thomas, who's for raising funds and stuff. So I think Coles, he's supposed to get back to me by Wednesday, tomorrow. He just needs approval, but what I had pitched is I said, you know, if you wanna do this on your own, that may be something we can work with and if you think about it, this is Union County's library. Union County serves Wesley Chapel, Weddington, um, Waxah, us, all of his customers, which he was like, like wowed by the fact that there's an opportunity for a 501(c)(3), which they are and this is a way, no taxpayer dollars are, are paid, to bring in the other communities where, you know, if as long as they pay the cost of this, um, whatever the company is to run first to last or whatever the name of the company is and then any proceeds go to that and some fundraising opportunities go with that, I think that is ideal. It's a win-win-win across the board um, for the library that its shortfall is one point five million right now. They're looking for some major donors. Um, and I'll be talking with them more about opportunities for that and, and, and also th- this is something I think Coles could really get on board with and you're not picking and choosing a specific charity like, uh, um, some of the ones we've talked about in the past, but this is one that affects everyone in Union County.
So, so why don't, once you talk to Coles and figure out what they can actually do, we'll talk about it on Tuesday.
And that's what I'm waiting for. He said that he'll get back to me as Wednesday when I explained that, that opportunity to.
Okay, perfect.
Okay. If everyone's okay with it, you know, I mean, that's a charity I'd be supporting them on.
Well, I know, but we don't, let's just, again, we can sit here and talk about it and be like, yeah, that sounds awesome, but we don't know what actually is gonna happen. So let's wait until Coles comes back to us and we can talk about it on Tuesday.
I'm just making a point. I don't think we take this opportunity to put funding towards a 501(c)(3), not do it this year when there's an opportunity right in front of us.
I know, so let's see what Coles wants to do and we'll talk about it on Tuesday.
Okay, just wanted to make that note.
Is that not English?
Um, Derek, I have one more thing. You said that was the last thing. Um, Marvin Day flyers. I, I mean, I would, I would love those and be able to put.
Um, Marvin Day flyers, I, I mean, I would, I would love those and be able to put Firethorn on the bottom of it and.
It's ready.
Okay.
Do you want me to do that for you, to put?
I mean, I can put it as long as it's, I mean, as long as I can just.
Well, we're, we're probably gonna put it and then print it here and then they can take them. You just need to let us know how many copies and.
Stack to take to Firethorn.
I, I, that and I'd love to email it to them too.
Okay.
And I'd love to email all the companies that, all the sponsors, um, but I mean, I'm happy to email my own sponsors, however you guys wanna handle that, but we need to start getting, getting those out now, so.
The delay in getting them out was, right now they tell you to visit the website to learn more, but when you go to the website, it's just the same flyer, there was nothing more on it yet. Um, and we have, we have this pressure to like push it up to the press people and like really start, um, doing it. So I told Christina, my number one priority was gonna get copy and content for the website because that, no one was assigned to that. I've got it all together, I'm gonna package it up and give it to Austin today. He's committed to getting it on the website this week.
Perfect.
Um, so now we're ready to proceed with flyers, so I have it on my list to.
So by Monday, Tuesday next week?
Well, I think part of the problem was just, so you understand too, like, Austin isn't creating content, so he's only putting on the website what she and I create.
Yeah.
I have to arrange it out there.
But, but he's gonna get it on the website this week, so by like.
She was trying to get all the descriptions and all the stuff done, it's just.
Totally fine.
We don't.
So I'm ready by the end of this week to have, uh, a saved file, one for each sponsor who we've already received their money and of course Cedar Hill and vendors and stuff who are wanting to start promoting that they're a part of the event. As far as printing them, I just need direction, like, am I printing how many for each vendor? And I'll start rounding them up on the printer.
I think each, whoever, if you have a vendor, you figure out how many you want, you tell Jill. I'll say, Jill, give me twenty-five for Firethorn, but I also wanna email it to them. I'm gonna email the Raptor Centers to them. I'm not gonna print out any and give them, cause I don't think anybody's going into the Raptor Center currently, um, because of the bird flu or whatever. Um, but then like my sponsors, like I would probably like to drop some off at Valentine Pediatric Dentistry.
Yeah, be my eye, all that stuff, yeah, for sure.
So you, as soon, if you think you'll be done by like Friday, like we can tell you like Monday, Tuesday next week, come by and pick some up and we'll be good to go.
I can have electronic copies to everyone by Friday and.
Monday, Tuesday, I think.
Like, I can have stacks of printed copies ready by your Tuesday meeting.
Okay, and I mean.
In the quantities anybody.
I'm not trying to push you, cause I know we wanna get all this stuff on there. So I mean, Monday, Tuesday, I think is fine, but that was on my list, I was like, I, I don't wanna forget about it, cause I.
Yeah, it was on my list for this week too, I just wanted to prioritize the website at the beginning of the week and the flyer at the end of the week, so we're just talking the same language, I think that's perfect, yeah. That's great timing for me.
Jill, yes, do we have a promotional calendar in terms of, are we gonna pulse media or are we just gonna block media out? In other words, are we gonna drop, let's say flyers this week, next week we're running Valentine Magazine, next week we're gonna do whatever? So then over a period of five to six weeks, every week, there is something.
Yes, that's gonna be a Lisa question.
There is a marketing, there is a marketing plan that has.
Yeah, you, you do need to do, that's a great strategy and one that I would definitely suggest, like, almost like a countdown.
Exactly.
To get the excitement.
And the other question I've got is, I think flyers, at least from my portion, maybe excellent, pony rides or anything. I think flyers are gonna be a big component in terms of getting beyond the breadth of Marvin and get it out there to let people know about us, because nobody comes to our website. So my question is, would it be worthwhile to, and you know better than I do now, but like Eagle Scout troops or something, where they take responsibility for distributing some of the flyers out among the community, I don't know if it's Eagle Scout or schools, but where we get a lot of people distributing flyers and it doesn't just rest on the shoulders of one, two or three people? Have we thought about that?
I think as many ways to get the word out as possible. If we're gonna print and hand out physical flyers, have them in businesses around town, social media, news desks. There is a whole plan for pushing it out to magazines, news desks, um, social media. We're gonna work together on getting it out to like the gardening enthusiasts and, um, art enthusiasts. The, the vendors and sponsors are also gonna push it out. Since we have the logo, um, one of the things that I wanna do is just have a little logo that they can drop on their website. We used to do this at my last company that would say like, I'm a twenty-twenty-two Marvin Day vendor. And it's like, it's like a link that they can put on their, it's like a little icon and then you can click on it and it will take them directly to our site. So hopefully, these vendors and sponsors can also help drive people to our site to learn more about the event as well. But I think across promotional, anyone who wants to hand out flyers to your point, I'll print them and have them ready.
No, I'm just, I was just asking a question.
I think it's a great.
Outside of vendors, if, if there's organizations that may just say, we'll help you do this, they do it, you know, like Girl Scouts.
Cause we're already working PTOs and the school and PTAR, all of that's happening this week.
That was one thing, don't, if you could get me just an electronic one without like anything on the bottom, without like a, you know, a company.
We have a generic one that just says, visit the website to learn more.
If you can send that to me, I can get it out, um, by Friday, I can get it out for the PTO and PTSO cause they'll put together their like news, e-blast for the weekend.
Perfect.
And the QR code will take them to that same spot on the website?
Yep.
Cause there was a QR code.
It really takes them to.
And it works on our website, yeah. It works, I try to.
Yeah, it does work, for sure.
Can I read the, uh, garden, the, not garden, the, uh, nature walks one?
Yeah.
So if I had picked it up, if it needed.
I'll take a look at it, yeah, for sure.
All right.
Okay, what's up, what's next? Anything else for Marvin Day?
I don't think so.
Good job, everybody.
Oof.
New business.
What do you mean? Oh, that was good.
There is no new business here, um, so agenda items, review of action items.
So everybody's got their Marvin Day marching orders. Um, Bob wants to talk about, um, the times for these meetings, we'll have that on the agenda the next meeting. Um, we'll have the discussion of the Park, Pocket Park on the council agenda for next week. John, I will send you the HOA list and you said you were gonna work on a flyer.
For the, uh.
For the cleanup, yeah.
Yeah.
Um, other than that, that's all I have. That's all I have. Ongoing list?
Mm-hmm.
Open it up here.
I would take off the Pocket Park, art stuff, she's not gonna.
Take that off, okay.
Hmm. Yeah. We've got complete all Marv- Marvin Day marketing by two twenty-two, is that done? Or do we just need to push that out?
What's the item?
The, all of Marvin Day marketing, done by two twenty-two. Hmm. It's probably not all finished, right?
Yeah, it's not all finished, but it's, um, all the groundwork is there.
So it's just implementing it now?
All right, so I would complete that.